This is an invitation to secure your place on an exceptional team dedicated to safeguarding and serving our community's greatest assets.
You become family, and not just with the Transportation Department, with the whole school district. You feel valued.
The parents trust you. You hold a great responsibility for the world, carrying the most precious thing we have, their children, their inheritance, their legacy.
This is an invitation to be the first face our leaders of tomorrow see when they start and finish the school day.
I can't take summers off because I get depressed. I miss the kids.
Was looking for a job change, something different, the opposite of what I was before, which was sitting in an office, you know, more of a sense of purpose.
This is an invitation to be supported with full benefits and paid training and permitting. So whether you are a retiree, new to the job market, or just excited to positively impact the generation of tomorrow, apply to be an LSR-7 bus driver today.
Just need to come try it out. I think you'll like it.
This is your invitation to take a drive with LSR-7. This is an invitation to secure your place on an exceptional team dedicated to safeguarding and serving our community's greatest assets.
You become family, and not just with the Transportation Department, with the whole school district. You feel valued.
The parents trust you. You hold a great responsibility for the world, carrying the most precious thing we have, their children, their inheritance, their legacy.
This is an invitation to be the first face our leaders of tomorrow see when they start and finish the school day.
I can't take summers off because I get depressed. I miss the kids.
Was looking for a job change, something different, the opposite of what I was before, which was sitting in an office, you know, more of a sense of purpose.
This is an invitation to be supported with full benefits and paid training and permitting. So whether you are a retiree, new to the job market, or just excited to positively impact the generation of tomorrow, apply to be an LSR-7 bus driver today.
Just need to come try it out. I think you'll like it.
This is your invitation to take a drive with LSR-7. This is an invitation to secure your place on an exceptional team dedicated to safeguarding and serving our community's greatest assets.
You become family, and not just with the Transportation Department, with the whole school district. You feel valued.
The parents trust you. You hold a great responsibility for the world, carrying the most precious thing we have, their children, their inheritance, their legacy.
This is an invitation to be the first face our leaders of tomorrow see when they start and finish the school day.
I can't take summers off because I get depressed. I miss the kids.
Was looking for a job change, something different, the opposite of what I was before, which was sitting in an office, you know, more of a sense of purpose.
This is an invitation to be supported with full benefits and paid training and permitting. So whether you are a retiree, new to the job market, or just excited to positively impact the generation of tomorrow, apply to be an LSR-7 bus driver today.
Just need to come try it out. I think you'll like it.
This is your invitation to take a drive with LSR-7. This is an invitation to secure your place on an exceptional team dedicated to safeguarding and serving our community's greatest assets.
You become family, and not just with the Transportation Department, with the whole school district. You feel valued.
The parents trust you. You hold a great responsibility for the world, carrying the most precious thing we have, their children, their inheritance, their legacy.
This is an invitation to be the first face our leaders of tomorrow see when they start and finish the school day.
I can't take summers off because I get depressed. I miss the kids.
Was looking for a job change, something different, the opposite of what I was before, which was sitting in an office, you know, more of a sense of purpose.
This is an invitation to be supported with full benefits and paid training and permitting. So whether you are a retiree, new to the job market, or just excited to positively impact the generation of tomorrow, apply to be an LSR-7 bus driver today.
Just need to come try it out. I think you'll like it.
This is your invitation to take a drive with LSR-7.
Okay, we are going to call our regular October meeting to order here. It's at 7 o'clock. If we could have everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, thank you very much, and welcome to everyone who is in the room with us tonight, and to anyone who is watching online, or who may watch this at a later date. Thank you for being a part of the meeting and caring about what's going on in our school district. We do appreciate it. Just because we need to, there are two people in the room with birthdays tonight, Dr. Miller, Dr. Wright. Both have birthdays. Happy birthday. Thank you for sharing it with us. I'm sure it's exactly what you wanted to be doing. So, happy birthday. So, we appreciate both of you. And to anybody else in our school district, by the way, who has a birthday today, happy birthday. So, there we go. 1.04, we do need to adopt tonight's agenda, so we'll take the motion now from one of our board members, please.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second to adopt tonight's agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye? All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We are going to move to 2.01. This is our superintendent's report, and we will turn it over tonight to Dr. Buck.
You have an attachment in your agenda here, but I'm going to hit a couple, and I'm going to add one. So, first off, congratulations to the Rector Girls at Lee Summit West, who are the state champions in doubles tennis. They defeated St. Joseph in the state championship. Congratulations to Lee Summit West softball team, who won districts, and they actually, because of rain, got to play that on our brand-new turf field over at Lee Summit High at East Trails. I know it's a lot of connections there, but Lee Summit West is continuing to play on in the playoffs. All 18 elementary schools, including Sunset Valley, who's in the house tonight, have earned a Project Lead the Way Distinguished School recognition. So it's the highest honor they can get, and so congratulations to all 18 elementary schools. I want to thank everyone who is here that participated in yesterday's Legislative Day, and give kudos and thanks for Senator Razor, Representative Roland, Mayor Baird, council members Diane Forte, Andrew Felker, and Fred Demaro for showing up and participating. It was a huge success, so thank you to them. And then one I'm going to add that's not written there is that the night before last, I had the good fortune to go along with Laura Maxwell and Dr. Herzog, as well as Hope, who teaches over at Lee Summit West, with Matt Good, to celebrate. Matt Good is one of the seven finalists for Missouri State Teacher of the Year. And I thank Governor Parson and Commissioner Van Deven and the State Board for putting on that event, so it was fun to celebrate. Matt and see his three boys so excited to share, and as he represents so many good teachers in our district. So, thank you to Matt for all he does, and thank you to all educators for what they do.
Appreciate that. But you're not off the hook, because now we're just moving right to 3.01, and this is going to be you as well, so.
All right, it's Jennifer Rosker and Ryan Evans. You guys are here. Come on up. So, I'm going to have them come over to the podium area, and then I'm going to go over there and speak about them over there. That's already gone for me. So, these two individuals work at Woodland Elementary. They're worth their weight in gold. I can tell you as a parent of children in Woodland Elementary. In fact, Jennifer here is the nurse. She got to help my daughter out, who broke her arm playing football in recess on Tuesday. So, thank you, Jennifer, as a parent. But they're not here to celebrate the fact they helped my daughter when she broke her arm. They're here because we had a staff member who had a medical issue and was unresponsive, and these two people here saved his life. Coach Evans saw the individual, ran and got Jennifer. Then, as Jennifer is attending to, ran and got the AED, and they resuscitated the individual and literally did save his life. And, as you know, when you're in that situation, seconds matter, so thank you both for everything you did, and I appreciate you. And I'm one-handed, so I don't know which one's on top, so I'm going to hand it to you to let you open it, and then Matthew's going to want to get our picture. But thank you, Jennifer and Ryan. Give him a round of applause.
Okay, we're going to move on to 3.02, but that's kind of tough to follow. I just, so, but 3.02 is we are highlighting Sunset Valley this evening, and we have Rachel Flood and Amy Westacott here to highlight Sunset Valley, and so we are going to turn it over to them and their students.
Testing. Are we good? Okay. Thanks for giving some of your time tonight. We're very excited to be here, and I brought two student leaders with me. We have started an initiative at Sunset Valley to really follow along with our mission this year, which is engage, embrace, and empower students. So, who better to tell you about it than them? So I'm going to let them get to it.
Hi, my name is Charlie Atkins, and I'm a fifth grader at Sunset Valley Elementary. I'm here tonight to tell you about our new Leadership Academy. Leadership Academy focuses on empowering students and increasing relationships. Every third through sixth grader at SVE has a leadership job. My job is a lunch leader. My favorite part of being a lunch leader is that I get to help and younger kids look up to me. One time, I was walking into school, and I got off my bus, and a younger kid saw me and recognized me from Leadership Academy and gave me a hug. Now, Aiden will share a little more about Leadership Academy, how Leadership Academy is helping our school.
Hello, my name is Aiden York. I am a sixth grader at Sunset Valley Elementary. I am a part of the Leadership Academy there. It gives me a great sense of responsibility and pride to be a part of this program. I wake up with a smile on my face on the days I know I get to be a lunchroom leader. I enjoy helping people who work and learn at my school. I get to help people, which is my favorite thing to do, and I also help the lunchroom staff wash the tables. I enjoy being back at school this year with my friends and fellow students after being home for so long because of COVID. Now, here's a video created by our media and communications leaders. Thank you.
The Leadership Academy is a chance for every student at Sunset Valley to shine and to share their special skills with our whole school community.
The Leadership Academy is a way to build your friendships with others and help each staff and students communicate in the building.
I feel happy. I feel like I'm going to do it all the time.
A bunch of people have a job, and they want to keep it, that way they have to work super hard for that job.
It's helping me to be educated on different groups.
Uh, then they can make sure everybody's safe.
There's certain jobs, like cleaning up the playground, or taking out the trash, just better helping our adults here at SVE.
Helping people, helping like the office ladies, helping the teachers or the lunch ladies.
I think it is important for students to develop those leadership skills of knowing where I'm supposed to be, what time I'm supposed to be there, and what is the job I'm doing to help and to assist someone else.
It makes the teachers feel happy inside because the kids are helping the teachers do their jobs that they have, they had before.
They're really getting a sense of what it means to form a community within a school.
I think it's important that they're not just learning what they learn in class, but also other things that can help them with life.
Everybody being a part of something with some kind of role, it just makes it very impactful for the building in general. It just feels really cohesive and good.
The staff doing all the work, the kids need to help too.
So we can help out the teachers, so the teachers don't have to struggle.
It helps show them responsibility.
To help the teachers out.
I think the jobs help Sunset Valley because it helps us all as a community take care of each other and take care of our school.
So we can learn how to do it by ourselves.
One day, they're going to be so glad that they got that job, and they're going to be happy.
I love most about the changes is the excitement among the students and staff of working together.
You can also make good friends with the people that you're doing your job with.
I love seeing students walk around the building with such a purpose, and such pride, and such ownership in taking care of our building, and taking care of each other, and in taking on those leadership roles.
Right. That way, we want to spend a good life here and have lots of fun here.
And just one final thing that I have to add, is that video was 100% created by the kids in our school. I think it was two third-grade students that they did all the filming, all the editing, they laid the music behind that and prepared that for you guys tonight. So, pretty cool to think about the opportunities that we're providing for our students. So, thank you for letting us share with you.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Appreciate it. 3.03 is going to be our East Trails Middle School Bond Project update, which is going to be delivered, I believe, by Deandre and Jeff here from Account Gordon. So we'll turn it over to you, gentlemen. He's going to want you to speak into the mic so that people can pick you up that are watching online here, so.
Oh, I'll just say it again. I'm Jeff Clemmons, General Superintendent over the East Trails Middle School. I'm over the entire project and building. Hey, I'm Deandre Guidry, project engineer over at East Trails. We've got a slide presentation we're going to show everybody and talk to, what's going on on the site. So this is a drone video of the entire site. You can see we've got the turf laid on the softball field, and they've actually used it for, I think, three games now. And then we've got the baseball field turf done. We're going up with the rest of the dugouts. We've got about half of the asphalt down. In the next two to three weeks, we're going to be asphalt in the rest of the site. Then here's a drone picture of the progress on the main building. We're actually getting ready to make the last three slab pours in the next probably three weeks. We've got another one tomorrow. Then here's a picture of the very first game that was played on the softball field. And this picture is in the Area A of the classroom wing, which is the sixth grade wing. This is actually the woodshop area. Then this is a shot of the tile that we've got laid in the bathrooms. Another one of the restrooms. Then we've started installing lockers in the sixth grade classroom wing. And I'll let Deandre take these next couple. Okay, right here is Area B, which is the seventh grade classroom, classroom wing. Right now, we're just doing drywall, finishing. Got some paint started in some of these areas, but like you see in the last slides, you'll see some of the tile and casework and lockers start coming in here shortly. Same here, this is Area C, just a little bit further behind than the rest of the areas. Same thing going on here, just laying drywall, prepping for paint and floors and tile. Then this is Area D, which is the commons area, lunchroom, and then in the back parts where the library is going to be and media center. This is the stairs in Area D. The roofers in the next probably three weeks will have the roof on this area. Then this is Area E, which is up on the west side of the building, which will be bathrooms, weight rooms, locker rooms. Music rooms. Music rooms. Yeah. And this is inside the competition gym. We do have the roof on it now, so that picture's a little bit old. And this is in the auxiliary gym, which is also the tornado shelter. We've started overhead roughens there, so probably within the next month, we'll be painting in there. This is Area G, which is the kitchen. We're almost finished with all the block walls in there. We're starting next week measuring for kitchen equipment. Then this is also Area E, which is the locker rooms, weight rooms. Any questions?
Does anybody have any questions or comments here in relation to the pictures for the bond project? Board member Sparks?
No questions, just thank you for the progress. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, there we go.
By the way, if you don't follow Jeff on Twitter, he puts pictures up every two or three days of that progress, so you can watch the entire... They want to know what your Twitter handle is. I don't know, maybe you don't want to put that out here, I don't know.
I'll give it to you. It's actually Jay Clemmons, Jeff. But yeah, I try to put pictures on weekly, sometimes twice a week, depending on the progress we're making, just to show everybody the progress we are making on site.
Thank you again for being here, both of you. We appreciate it. We are going to move on to item 4.01. This is our public comments for tonight, and so to go over kind of the processes for that, we'll turn it over to our parliamentarian, Board Member Hedrick.
Thank you. We appreciate your attendance and your willingness to speak to the board. Please remember while this is a public meeting, this part of the meeting does not contemplate a conversation between speakers and board members. The board does not respond to public comments during the meeting, but may ask clarifying questions. Your comments will be noted by the board, and if appropriate, we will direct the subject to the administrators who are responsible for that particular subject matter. Pursuant to Board Policy BDH, we will be limiting all comments to no more than 10 people with a limit of three minutes each. Your allotted three minutes will be counted down on the screen. Please conclude your comments when the timer expires. Only those who have signed up prior to the meeting will be allowed to address the board. Please refrain from using the names of any students, staff. In your remarks, remain respectful and ensure your comments pertain to the district operations. We also ask all audience members to remain respectful. Lastly, when your name is called, go to the podium and clearly state your name and the organization you represent, if any.
Thank you very much, Board Member Hedrick. It looks like we have seven speakers for tonight, so I'll announce the first one and then also say who is coming up, so that you know if you are coming up next. Our first speaker is Dana White, and then... I'm just joking. We have five. So the first speaker is Robin Gray, and then the second speaker will be Shelley Poppin.
Good evening. My name is Robin Gray. I'm a counselor at Lee Summit North High School, and I've been in the district 17 years. I'm here to speak with you all tonight about the importance of black student unions in our schools. I am the head sponsor, at Lee Summit North High School, of our Black Student Union. Black Student Union started in the late 1960s, and as you fast forward to today, they are still necessary in our schools. If you were to examine the student organizations of surrounding colleges, including Mizzou, UMKC, Rockhurst, UCM, KUK State, even Johnson County, you will see some sort of black student organization represented. This is the first year that all three high schools in LSR-7 have black student unions, and each one has their own personal mission, but our missions come from a very similar and familiar need, the need to be heard, supported, and encouraged. BSU's serve an important resource in high schools, a resource that can provide leadership development opportunities, as this was the case when students have our meetings and prepare agendas and develop future events. BSU's are safe spaces for students to express themselves without fear of judgment. BSU's provide community involvement, as was the case when I took a group of students to Lee Summit Elementary School and Prairie View Elementary School to discuss seatbelt safety, excuse me, with students. And two years ago, I took a group of students to Columbia, Missouri, where Columbia School Districts have a program called MAC Scholars. MAC stands for Multicultural Achievement Committee, and they have a program that encourages underrepresented students to pursue higher-level courses, honors courses, AP courses, and they work with Mizzou to prepare students for their futures. So, black students have been instrumental in providing support to persist students to graduation, and in this day, our students are paying attention to what's said and what's not said in our school districts and around in society. They experience or have experienced conversations, behaviors, activities throughout their educational lives that make them really uncomfortable, but they can't, they don't have a safe place to talk about those things. So BSU's give them that safe space to express how they feel with their fellow students. BSU's are inclusive. We have white students, we have Asian students, we're predominantly black, but we have all students. We include all students, and they're constructive for all students. So, we feel, I just hope that the district will see the necessity for our BSU's to be a part of the curriculum in the school district, excuse me. It is my hope that students, faculty, and administrators will continue to support them because they fit perfectly into the mission of Lee Summit, which is to prepare each student for a success in life, and our visions. Lee Summit R7 is an exemplary school district, graduating students who are college and career-ready with competitive advantage necessary for success. All the things that we do in the BSU fit into the vision, excuse me, and the mission of LSR-7. So it's my hope that LSR-7 will get behind our BSU's since we have them at all high schools now, and will support us and help us to grow so that our students are successful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Second speaker is Shelley Poppin. Shelley? No. Our third speaker is Michelle Barnes, and then it'll be Ashley Alshewish.
My name is Michelle Barnes, and I have three daughters in the district. After hearing on the news this morning that school leaders are asking the board to continue the mask mandate, I'm going to assume you all already know how you will vote without even listening to the parents. According to CDC.gov, as of yesterday, there have been 542 deaths out of over 73 million kids. The fatality rate of kids under 18 is less than .003%. How many students in our district have died of COVID? How about we compare that number to the suicide deaths in our... How about we compare that number to the suicide deaths in our district the past 18 months? The same kids my daughter sit next to all day with a mask are the same kids they hang out with after school. The same kids my daughter has to stay away from at recess are the same kids she has sleepovers with. You cannot sit there and tell me that wearing a mask for eight hours a day does not have a negative effect on their immune system or mental health. Why is something that affects every single one of the students in this district not up to the parent at all? You know the majority of parents don't agree with their kids being masked all day, yet you continue this unconstitutional mandate. Which one of you will stand up and say it's enough? The majority of parents also do not agree with critical race theory in our schools. They just don't realize that you are hiding it behind words like equity, diversity, and inclusion. Parents, if you do not agree with critical race theory in our schools, then you have got to speak out before it's too late. Do a little research, and it won't take you long to realize the end goal of things like equity and inclusion. Public schools are the perfect place to indoctrinate our kids. If the National School Board asking the FBI to label upset parents as threats and domestic terrorists isn't enough to wake you up, what will? What will it take for you to realize what is happening to your children at school? How far will it have to go for you to speak out? In the book We Will Not Be Silenced, Erwin Lutzner says, "Parents clothe their children, feed them, and send them to school, but the hearts and minds of their kids are being stolen and molded by a world many of us don't understand." As sad as it is, he's right. The job of the school board is to represent the parents and our kids, but lately it seems like school boards are representing the government and not the parents. When we no longer feel like you are representing us, it is not only our right to speak out, it is our duty as parents. Your job is to teach science, math, and history, not label parents as threats. Please take the masks off our kids. Thank you.
Next speaker is Ashley Alshewish, and then our final speaker is Calvin Werner and Rhonda Ireland, which are listed together.
Good evening. I am a concerned taxpayer and constituent in this district. Because it is my job as a parent to oversee curriculums and ideologies that are exposed to my children, I submitted a Missouri Sunshine request to LSR VII earlier this summer, asking for a general overview of elementary-level curriculum. I then received an invoice for over $17,000. My husband and I revised our request, and then we asked for just a general search query, most people can actually make that, of a list of over 50 terms. This time, our invoice was around $300, but in a professional email response, this board actually responded saying there would be an approximate 41-year wait for you all to organize and deliver the information that we asked for. For these reasons, among many others, you have seen me here over the last six months, attending and speaking at board meetings. I am a concerned taxpayer and constituent in this district. I am saddened that the National School Board Association, with the current Department of Justice, has now labeled me a domestic terrorist and a threat to you all. This is something that is a direct violation of my First Amendment rights. And the Missouri State School Board Association actually agrees with me. This state school board has released public, excuse me, several public statements, disagreeing and distancing themselves from the NSBA. Missouri is one of 18 states to do so. However, sadly, this district wants to continue silencing us and our concerns. The Kansas City Star summarizes statements from LSR VII with the following statement: "Several education officials in Missouri welcomed the DOJ effort, saying that it may help teachers and board members feel safer." Lee Summit School spokeswoman Katie Bergen says that the district is actually pleased, and Garland is prioritizing the protection of school employees and elected officials from threats of violence, harassment, and intimidation. From that, I have several questions for you all. When have any of you actually felt threatened or unsafe at any of these board meetings? We're not independents, we're not even Park Hill. Why do you continue to attempt eliminating the parent prong in education? Growing up, I always heard from my teachers and my school administration that there were a triangle in the prongs of education. There's the teachers, the students, and then the parents, and it just seems like we're not going to ever be able to find a solution with you all. If you would rather us not be here tonight, how is it that we're ever going to work together in the future? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our final comments from tonight, Calvin Werner and Rhonda Ireland.
Hello, my name's Rhonda Ireland, and I've taught for 29 years in our school district. Know several of you, and I have spoken quite a few times in the last five years, and I'm excited to be here tonight. I am here to talk about how excited I am about our three high schools and our black student unions and the work that we are doing to help our students, all of our students, feel safer in our hallways and in our classrooms. And a year and a half ago, when a group came to me and asked me to be the sponsor, I was humbled and very excited about it, and we were able to get it passed during COVID. And like my friend and colleague Robin Gray has shared, the need for it is ever-present. We are a public school district, we service all in our community, and as our community has become more diverse, so has our school populations. And we need to make sure that we're providing safe spaces for all of those students, for all of our marginalized groups. And I'm excited to let you hear from our BSU president, Calvin Werner.
Hi, hi everyone, my name is Calvin Werner. I am the president of Harmony Council and BSU at Lee Summit West. And I just wanted to take the little bit of time that I have to tell a personal story, but also the story of many other marginalized students in our school. This is really a matter of safety, when we really go down to it. Coming to school, I feel very uncomfortable, and I know this is the same experience that many other students of marginalized backgrounds, whether they're disabled, whatever it is, feel coming to school every single day. A large portion of my work outside of school consists of fighting for these students every single day, and other students do this as well with me. And at this point, we should not have to beg for the bare minimum, period. It is not my job, to be honest, I should be doing my homework. I've been met with resistance from staff and students alike in this struggle, and frankly, I'm just very tired. Creating a safer environment can look like many different things, it should not be this difficult. And, you know, we're not asking for a very big, you know, this very big change, you know, even a small start would do fine for now. This can look like training for teachers to be culturally competent, or cultural competence activities for students, anything. We exist, whether you guys like it or not, and therefore, we have to be accommodated for. Equity is not a box to check off, it's not a buzzword, it's not some scary thing, it needs to just be ingrained into the DNA of the district and making sure that all students are protected and safe. I thank you guys, I just want to thank you guys for the work that you do, but we have a lot more, so... That's all, thank you.
And I'd also like to invite you out to one of our BSU meetings, so I will be sending everybody an email. Thank you.
Thank you to everyone who came and commented during tonight's meeting. We are going to move on to item 5.01. This is our board reports and meetings attended portion of the meeting. Members did submit the different meetings that they have attended, especially in terms of committees, but we will quickly highlight those, and we will start with board member Campbell this evening. Board member Campbell?
Great. I attended the insurance committee meeting, and again, the team that works on that, Sarah McMillan and her team did a great job sharing information with the committee. There were some new committee members, so the first thing they did was review kind of what the committee is asked to do. We have that committee that includes building representation from every building in the district, and basically, that committee is asked to come to the meetings, gather information, and share that out with their buildings. Sarah also clarified what they're not asked to do. They're certainly not asked to give, you know, insurance information advice, or talk through any claims information, that's why we have the insurance team. So that was a great way to kick the meeting off. And then Sarah and her team went into details about what the insurance open enrollment looked like, what the plans looked like for this year, sharing that out so that all of our district staff will have that information as well. So appreciate that meeting and appreciate that participation, because we had great participation in that meeting as well. A couple of other items I want to highlight. I went to the Miller Park Center homecoming picnic and really enjoyed meeting teachers, staff, current students, and past students that had come back to visit for the homecoming. So that was great, and I also got to hear Dr. Buck speak at the Lee Summit Chamber of Commerce, state of our schools, appreciated so much his partnership with the other schools that were there representing, school districts or schools that were there representing as well, and he did a great job just really highlighting all the great things about our district. I also attended the legislative session at Sunset Valley. I think Dr. Buck gave kudos and thank yous to all the legislators and representatives that were able to attend. I would also like to extend the thank you to Rachel Flood and Amy Westacott for hosting us at the school, and I really enjoyed the touring and talking with students and talking with them, so it was a great morning again of discussion and sharing information. And that's everything from me.
Thank you very much. We're going to kind of ping pong back and forth, so we'll go to board member Sparks.
We're doing something new, I wasn't quite ready.
I know, sorry, I was just like, you know, we haven't done that before, so I was just like...
I'm used to change, so it's alright. Alright, listen, so I'm just going to just highlight my first school tour, which was at Miller Park. Let me tell you, Mr. Kelly, the principal there, and Ms. Alonso, vice principal, they have a great, a great program. They actually have three facets to their program. I did put all that information in my notes, but the biggest thing that I was able to take away is the love that they have for the students. They truly love the kids, and that's why you'll see me in schools as much as I can, because that's what I want to do and be about, is to art students. Thank you.
Thank you, board member Sparks. I'll try to alert us next time, when we, when we start going back, there we go. So, alright, so back to the left, we're going to go to board member Hedrick.
The only report committee I had was the finance committee, and board member Campbell will be giving that report shortly.
Okay, thank you very much. Board member Fritchy?
Okay, thanks very much. Of course, I'm going to report on Lee Summit Educational Foundation, and our big event, which just happened a couple Saturdays ago, was actually Race for the Future. It was very successful, and we're still awaiting the financial report to find out exactly how much monetarily, but nearly 900 people registered for Race for the Future this year, which was fantastic. It's approximately 250 less than 219, but it's a whole lot more than we had virtually last year, so we were really happy about that big increase, and just seeing everybody out there having a good time, it was a beautiful day, and all the participants, it was just a wonderful thing. We, our top three schools with the highest participation did win grants, and our third, I'm going to go third to first, third place was Woodland Elementary, and they get $250 for their school. Second place was Hazel Grove Elementary, and they get $750 grant. And first place this year was Sunset Valley, who you just saw here a little bit ago, with a $1,000 grant to promote education in their school. So we're very happy with our participation from all of our elementary schools who helped participate. We're coming along pretty well with our Friends of the Foundation campaign that we keep mentioning, that we've raised over $130,000 so far for this fiscal year, and we have a current list of sponsors which you can get to if you want to go to my report, which is in the packet. Also, Taste of Lee Summit, remember that, we didn't get to have it last year. This year, we will have it on March the 5th, so mark your calendars, it'll be a great night to come out. We're going to have our first meeting in December, and we are excited about having a real Taste of Lee Summit this year. Just a little reminder, if you do do holiday shopping through Amazon, which a lot of people do, remember to go on their Amazon Smile and select Lee Summit Educational Foundation through the Amazon Smile program, and when you do that, they donate .5% of eligible purchases to our organization, and that helps us have money to put back into our kids, so, and our schools. Thank you very much. Just some of the same things that board member Campbell mentioned, you know, did attend the Miller Park Homecoming BBQ and had a good time of just seeing all the action and meeting the kids and parents. Again, the Lee Summit Chamber of Commerce, state of the schools addresses, again, Dr. Buck, great job, along with the Blue Springs Superintendent, Dr. Jerome, and the Summit Christian Academy and St. Michael's all gave reports, and I really appreciate the chamber having that event, it's great to hear from all of those and see the camaraderie among the schools. The legislative meeting yesterday, yes, absolutely a high point, lots of great information at a wonderful school, Sunset Valley. And then today, to cap it all off, had so much fun, I got to visit Trail Ridge Elementary right before I came to the work session tonight with Lee Summit Educational Foundation to see their broadcasting team in action. These are kids from fourth grade through sixth grade, and they received the funding for their software and some of their equipment from a Lee Summit Educational Foundation grant that they got, a PEC grant they got last year. And so, it's always great to see the schools using that to help kids have great experiences, and so, just a real pleasure to serve in that capacity. Thank you very much.
Thank you, board member Fritchy. Board member Allen?
Thank you, President Murdock. My quick report will be the fact that I assisted at Race for the Future and was lucky enough to be able to make some announcements and cheer folks on, and also welcome Dr. Buck, certainly, and had a couple of humorous comments, at least that I thought were humorous about that, but also Matthew Ketteman, last year's Teacher of the Year, and Kim, his wife, sang the National Anthem, which was a fantastic treat, and they did great. So, that was, that was awesome. Chrissy Sims gave me three or four pages or so for script, and I think I read about a half of one page and kind of went off from there, but attended the legislative meeting yesterday that was outstanding, and really was pulled away from a few things that I would otherwise attended, hence the chamber luncheon, but was in ER with a member of her family at that time, so I didn't quite get there, but, yeah, it was good. Thank you.
Board member Marshall?
Thank you. I had the pleasure of attending a Lee Summit Cares Committee meeting. I had two things to report back. The first one, this Saturday, October 29th, they will be doing a drug take-back, a disposal of drugs safely, and that will be 10:00 to 14, 10 o'clock to 2:00 PM. 10 o'clock to 2:00 PM.
We knew.
Yeah, you're welcome. This Saturday, one location will be at John Knox Village, which board member Fritchy will be there accepting drugs and disposing of them safely. Okay, got you. There are two other locations, the Police Department and the Lee Summit Medical Center. Now, if you go to the Lee Summit Cares website, there is a link to where you can find other locations, if Saturday does not work for you, and you can get your drugs disposed of safely. Another thing that we discussed was the different programs and initiatives that Lee Summit Cares covers in their, in their overall organization. One thing we talked about was the Youth Advisory Board, whose overall mission is to promote mental health, positive mental health, and other challenges that their peers face. And the unique thing about this committee is that it's focused with the Lee Summit community as a whole, because as we know, Lee Summit is in some other districts. So, right now, they are focusing on bringing in more volunteers in the adult capacity to assist with these young people as they, you know, begin to advocate, they advocate at city council meetings, they even go down to Jeff City to promote these things that are impacting the youth. So there will be more information to come for that, and how you can get involved and help mentor and advise these young people as they pretty much lead the way. And, was there one more thing? Nope, that was it? That was it? Thanks.
Thank you very much. Just a couple of things for me, I also attended the Insurance Committee meeting with board member Campbell, and I'm going to continue to, every time I'm on those calls and our meetings, ask the question of, how is this sustainable, essentially? Because it's not. So, we're going to keep working on that component, and that's not anybody's fault, by the way. So we're going to keep working on that component, and that's not anybody's fault, by the way. But I do think it's a question that we're going to have to be continually asking every year. We also then, Dr. Buck and I, attended essentially our quarterly meeting with Mayor Baird and City Manager Arbo to talk and continue some of the collaborative efforts that we already have started with those city leaders. And I think it would be okay to tell the board members, we are looking at doing a joint meeting between the City Council and the School Board, hopefully in December or January, somewhere in that timeframe. We're still trying to get that scheduled, but we do think it'd be very productive with the number of initiatives that we have that are combined between the two entities. So we think that that'll be really important to make sure that we all are on the same page, that we all are communicating out to constituents throughout the city, the positive things that are going on between our school district and the city, because there are a lot of things, a lot of good things happening.
Santa Claus coming up.
Yeah, absolutely. Is that okay? Okay. So that's the other thing. And then we did have our district leadership meeting, Vice President Marshall and I, with Dr. Buck, and we'll continue doing that here in a couple of weeks. The last thing, all of the board members, I believe, are going to be at the MSBA Conference here in just a couple of weeks. So we're going to spend a weekend together going through some different presentations and stuff like that. It's here in Kansas City this year, which is exciting that we don't have to travel. So we'll be doing that in a couple of weeks. And that is all from me. We're going to move on to our Item 6, which is our Finance Committee and our Finance Committee Report, and it sounds like it's going to be Board Member Campbell this month.
It is, thank you. We met yesterday, as Board Member Hedrick shared, and we reviewed the contracts, $15,000 and less. We also reviewed the Conica Minolta project information. And so this is a great initiative because they're actually going through and consolidating printing and kind of moving away from everybody has a desktop printer to that consolidated printing focus. With that, with this item that we'll be reviewing tonight, they'll have 28 new printers, 60 will go on service contracts, and 175 will be eliminated. So that was great, great work on that part. They also were reviewing the Paper Corporation, a paper bid award. So you might remember a few weeks or a few months ago, we talked about paper and approved that. This is a little bit separate because with storage concerns, this allows our district to be able to purchase the amount of paper that we can store and not have to purchase things that we don't have room for. So we'll be reviewing that for approval as well. Heartland Seating is at Lee Summit High School in the B gym. There have never been bleachers. So if there is an event there or some type of competition, they put out folding chairs. As part of the overall construction, some of that storage space where those folding chairs are stored is going away. And so these bleachers are the kind that collapse down, so they'll still have room for student events in the gym, and then they'll be able to pull these bleachers out. So that's up for our approval. Black &amp; McDonald do network cabling for us, and so this will augment the resource that we have in the IT department that does a lot of the network cabling to assist with work that we need to have accomplished. Also, there will be network equipment purchased through Converge One. So we're reviewing that for approval. One that I'm very excited about is, you know, we've talked a lot about clinics in school, medical care, behavioral health care, mental health care in our schools, making it more accessible for our students, making it more accessible for our parents, eliminating that sometimes need for a parent to take off work to be able to have some supports for their students. And so this agreement opens that door from a mental health perspective. So Burrell Behavioral Health is a company that currently is in the Springfield-Nixa area. They are looking to expand their footprint to the Kansas City area, and this agreement will allow us to open that door with them, looking at potentially five behavioral health counselors that will be in our schools. Right now, those won't be fixed locations because we want them to be able to float, but our part of this agreement is providing that space for those services to occur. And then parents would engage around that, students would be engaged for that, and the fees would be through the parents' insurance and those kinds of things. So one question that we discussed is what insurance companies do they accept and those kinds of things? So as they're moving to this area, they'll be looking to increase that to some of the Kansas City area insurance companies as well. And so just kind of walking through how that would work, and there'll be more discussion around this after we sign that agreement, but it would be services available on the school site during school hours for our students, which is, I think, just that great first step. And definitely, mental health is the start, medical services, more to come and more to discuss and follow about that. So I'm really excited to see that progress. Any questions on that item? Okay, great. Okay?
Just a quick question. You mentioned about the collaboration with the insurance. Are there procedures put in place for those community members who may have a barrier in that area, who don't have insurance?
So yes, the plan is to open up access for all students and that there would be grant money or different avenues. They will accept Medicaid, that kind of thing as well, but also for students that do not have insurance to ensure there are services for those students as well. Great question. And thank you, because I wanted to highlight that as well. So thanks. Kaplan-Kirsch Rockwell, another company that we're going to work with, they provide legal services in a space that the current legal, you know, we've talked a lot about attorneys that we work with as a school district. This group is specifically in the avenue of aerospace. And so they will work with us and help us, as we're discussing with the City of Lee Summit, that collaboration around our new Aerospace Academy. So this is an approval just for us to work with this firm. And then we did have a couple of human resources items, non-allocated request for an Assistant Director of Design and Construction. And we know how hard Kyle Gurrell and his staff currently work. This is one more position that will assist them in all of these bond construction projects because the work is huge, and this will definitely assist them in getting that work completed and managing that work really well for us. Another non-allocated request for a paraprofessional specialist to work one-on-one. So there was a student with an IEP that needs this one-on-one paraprofessional that we currently cannot fulfill just with current staffing. So that's what this is about. And then around the bond budget update, really excited to share, and I know earlier in the work session, Dr. Miller highlighted some of these items as well, but currently, the athletics is continuing to be $1.75 million under budget. Lee Summit High School currently is around $2 million under budget. We are keeping those budget numbers in place, though, because we do know that's a three-year construction project. The new middle school, East Trails Middle School, is currently running $1.3 million under budget. And with Mason General, you know, we have the guaranteed price, the guaranteed maximum price. And with the construction, a lot of that work being completed, now we will get a return of $300,000 coming back in that buildings line item from the construction company. So that's very exciting as well. Also, in the work session, we highlighted Paradise Park, the security, and then some of the middle school renovations and the additional monies that would be allocated around those. So I just wanted to highlight those from a bond budget update, and then we'll talk a little bit more about the transfer of funds.
We will let you go ahead and do that.
Okay, thank you. And I'm clicking to do that. I move that we approve the transfer of $3,444,984.37 from the general fund to the special revenue fund.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the transfer of funds. Is there any discussion on 6.02? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Board Member Campbell?
The Finance Committee recommends that the Board, I move that the Board of Education approves the treasurer report and the payment of the bills.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second to approve 6.03 and pay the bills. Any discussion on that one? All those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Board Member Campbell. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to Item 7. This is our consent agenda for tonight. We're looking at Items 7.01 through 7.15. It's at this time that I'd ask any board members, is there any item that needs to be polled and discussed individually? Board Member Campbell?
I don't want to pull it and discuss it individually, but I did just want to make a comment on the board policies.
We would pull it, if we want to have a discussion about it, we will pull it and make it an individual item.
Okay, then I'll skip it.
You sure?
Yep, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, it's no problem. Okay. Hey, you'll be able to on the next time, since it's only the first read, too, right? So, okay.
I move to approve the consent agenda items 7.01 through 7.15 as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda tonight. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We're going to move on to items for decision tonight. So in eight, we're going to start with 8.01. This is the non-allocated request for the Assistant Director of Design and Construction, and these first two were just mentioned by Board Member Campbell. Do you have anything to add, Dr. Buck or Dr. Miller, in regards to this position?
Well, this is probably the last time you'll see these separate because you just approved it in consent agenda. It's been historical, we just wanted to give you the heads up before we made the change. It's been historical, we list them again, but it is redundant because if you didn't vote now, but you did just vote.
For the personnel.
Which vote do I go by? So the second one, we would be careful because there is an individual attached to that. So if we have to have a discussion, the second one that needs to move to closed session. So we can make sure we don't disclose information we shouldn't disclose. But the first one is, you know, there's a lot going on renovation-wise, and now we're getting into middle school renovations. Renovations are harder. So Kyle, and he has one assistant now, this will be a second assistant to help him complete our task at hand.
So we'll take a motion for 8.01, just understanding that this will end up in the personnel report from here on. That's what you're saying, right? Yes.
It already is.
Right, right. I just meant in future meetings, we won't see these. Okay.
I move that the Board approve the request for a non-allocated Assistant Director of Design and Construction.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for 8.01. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye? All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We need a motion for 8.02 for the paraprofessional specialist.
I move to approve the request for a non-allocated one-on-one paraprofessional specialist.
Second.
Motion and a second for Item 8.02. Is there any discussion on this item? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 8.03, this is our 2022 middle school boundaries discussion for tonight in terms of trying to make a decision on what we're going to do with our middle schools and elementary schools. You have the attached PowerPoint, board members, that is very similar, obviously, to the one that we received before in the work session. Dr. Buck, Dr. Miller, is there anything that you would like to add at this time?
I think Dr. Miller's going to come up. The recommendation's been made by the committee, and the committee is done. So if you have questions, she's here to answer them. She tried to answer questions for you as well in between when they made the recommendation and today. And so you have some documents there that are part of those answers, but she's happy to answer any other questions, and the recommendation is in front of you.
So at this time, board members, if you have any questions for Dr. Miller or comments regarding this, I do think what we should do even before we do that is I do think we should have a motion on the floor before we start questions or discussions in regards to this 8.03.
I move that the Board approve the proposed middle school boundaries for the 2022-23 school year.
As presented.
As presented.
Is there a second? I will second it for the discussion. Okay. So at this time, if you have questions for Dr. Miller or comments, now's the time. Board Member Fritchy?
First of all, I wanted to say that I deeply appreciate all of our community volunteers and our school district volunteers who served on this committee. I know that that's not an easy job and that it took lots of time, effort, study, maybe even some stress and tension in the process, because this is a huge process when you're trying to decide boundaries anytime you go that direction. I truly do appreciate the time they set over 1,000 hours, I believe, in our work session collectively, that all of those folks spent in this project. I keep coming back to, as I look at the final two plans that were presented to us, and considering the comments that we've received from many of our patrons or parents, and keep looking at the numbers. And then I guess my biggest point of reference is working for 18 years at the middle school level as an assistant principal, watching the kids walk through the door on the first day of school. We've got kids anywhere from about four feet tall to about six feet tall, and the range of emotions that come through on the faces of the kids as they walk through the door on the first day of school. The amount of anxiety that I see in those faces sometimes, some kids are fine, but there are a lot of kids who are worried. They're worried about a lot of things when they start middle school. It's the first time for them to change classes. They're worried about if they're going to make the class on time. They're worried about, can I open my locker? They're worried about the possibility of taking showers and PE. They're worried about lots of many different things because it's unknown territory for them as they're coming from elementary school. Their emotional needs are one of the things that I just really keep coming back to as I look at the plans for splitting students from several of our elementary schools, many more than we do now. I have a hard time with that, splitting our kids from the elementary side to the middle school side. I can't quite wrap my head around that, why it's so necessary for us to take our kids from our elementary schools and take them from their friends as they go into one of the most stressful transitions that they will experience in their school career, honestly. The move from middle school to high school is not as traumatic as the move it is from elementary school to middle school. And I just need to say that I cannot support the pink option that is being suggested. And I think of the two options, the two final options that were presented prior to the landing on the pink option, that I believe the purple option is actually better because there is only one elementary school in the entire district that has split under that option to send those kids from elementary school to secondary. And this really hurts my heart because I hate not to support our administration and our teachers and our parents who work so hard, but I just, in my gut, I just can't do that. Thanks.
Board Member Hedrick?
Pretty much my comments are pretty much ditto what Board Member Fritchy indicated. That's the big sticking point for me as well on the pink plan is the number of elementary schools that are being split. And I do have a serious concern about doing that, so that's my only comment.
Board Member Campbell?
So I so much appreciate the people that volunteered to be a part of the committee and all of the work that they did. And I appreciated at each step of the, kind of the project, the timeline, the check-in here with the Board, this is how we're progressing, the committee representation in those discussions, and coming to the Board with the updates and sharing that. And coming to the, the board with the updates and, and sharing that information. I also appreciated that at the open sessions, you know, where the public was invited to come in. That those were led by the committee members, and they were there to answer the questions. And really, after each one of those open sessions and after each survey point, went back and did the hard work and the evaluation to really come to the very best recommendation that as a committee and as an administration is being presented for us here tonight. I think, and we talked a little bit about this in the work session. That in our district, in our growing, in our growing community, in our growing district. We have got to be thinking about change. Change for our families, change for our students, and that is hard. And it, it does go to pulling heartstrings about your child and making those decisions around that. I know Dr. Miller, and I'd like to ask you if you would reiterate, because we talked a little bit about the social emotional supports for the transitions. As well as for the students that might have to make multiple changes. Where a parent or a student is concerned about that, what options they have available if we did progress with the pink plan.
Well, I think first and foremost, our building leaders take this very seriously, right? And so, you know, one of the outlines that we, we've provided to the board is really, boundaries are established, we establish staffing. And then it quickly shifts to focusing on students and making sure that we connect with families, bring kids into buildings. And really kind of get a sense of ownership if transition is to occur. The second component to that is, there's safeguards in place. Board Policy JCB Administrative Procedure Two really takes into consideration students with unique special needs that needs to be considered by administration. We have that ability to do that for, for students. And so it's really a matter of enacting that.
Thank you, thank you for highlighting that. And Dr. Buck, in the work session, we discussed a little bit. Because this concept of change for, for our district, the thought of boundary review. And when, what is the right cadence of when we're discussing as a community, when these boundary changes might need to be made? And how we're evaluating that? Can we talk a little bit about that as well?
So there's kind of two times that happens. One, when you're opening a new building like we are right now, in the fall of twenty-two. That necessitates a boundary change, obviously. But there also is a time where you might outgrow one facility, but be under in another facility. But you're not to the point, you need an extra facility. So you need to shift to stay in your current facilities without going out for a bond. And that's what happened previously with our high schools and the previous boundary change. So, those reviews on the previous ones, we can do on a regular basis. How often, I don't know, it really depends on how fast you grow. But we can try to set a standard number of years, at least look at it then. And I'd write, I want to get with our demographer and kind of figure out when that would be. But obviously, if, if things grow fast, you know, say if PRI land starts growing fast, and we, we get this thirty thousand more patrons here in the PRI land faster than, than later, that moves that up faster. So it all depends on, on our growth and where our growth within our district's happening. But this one isn't on a regular piece, this one's on, we add a new building added, and it automatically connects us to a process of doing a boundary. And, and I appreciate the six months and, and over a thousand hours that the committee put into this, so thank you.
And, and with that, just the concept of a person looking at houses and thinking about, that maybe has a two-year-old, that they're buying a house in the Lee Summit High School area. By the time that, that student is ready for high school, in a growing community, that may change. Those boundary lines may have to shift.
That's correct, and so I'm a product of that as well. I'm a parent, and I have a seventh grader in one middle school, being at a different middle school is an eighth grader. Regardless if it's pink or purple, or any of the other fifty options they look at, just based on where I live, I was guaranteed to switch. So, my seventh grader will be in four buildings in four years without making a move, from sixth grade to seventh grade to eighth grade to ninth grade. But that is part of being in a, in a vibrant, growing community.
Which we all want, that growth and that vibrancy, absolutely. All right, thank you so much.
Board Member Sparks?
I would like to say I appreciate the dialogue and the conversation that's taken place. I understand the sentiment of Kim and the fact that we're dealing with students, we're dealing with children that have feelings, that have emotions, they have concerns, they have care. I think that's why it's important, the work that we're doing. Because our job as a district is to, on day one, to make sure every single one of our students, no matter what building, what bus, what teacher, they feel loved, they feel cared for, and they're getting exactly what they need to be successful. And so I think with creating that culture, and I, through some of the in-person opportunities that stakeholders had to give their input. And when those concerns came from parents and being able to engage with them. And to be able to see Dr. Miller interact and answer some of the questions. And the fact that we may not have options of grandfathering in, we may not have other options. But the one option that we, that I do know that you explained was, if for whatever reason, if a kid feels that they're not safe, that they're not welcomed in a particular building, then there are steps in place, regardless if we was doing a boundary change or not. For those families to be able to, to make sure that their kid is cared for and, and, and is in a great place. Ultimately, I don't want anyone to feel like it's a particular building that makes their kid feel loved. I want it to be that this is our district, this is our full community, that makes everyone feel loved and ready to start on day one. The other point that I just want to bring up, that I think is very important, is the free and reduced lunch percentage. I think that's a very big point to highlight, that the team did work hard. That those were the metrics and the facts that they looked at. And I think regardless, however, a board member may vote for pink or purple. I don't think it's discrediting the work that they're doing. But I, I want to truly go on record saying that I want more participation from the community. And I think it's important to, if we're asking for the community to be part of the process and to do the work. Then we must trust that they're truly doing the work that's gonna benefit not their own individual student, but our student population at large. And so I'm gonna trust the recommendation, and I just pray to go along with Mrs. Campbell's thing is, we need to be having these conversations before it's time to make this shift. And if this, we know that we're growing, we're in a growing community, so let's start having these conversations. Let's bring in the individuals to the table that is necessary to have these conversations, so that when families move here to Lee Summit, as a community, we know that changes are still taking place. And that we're making the best decisions. Because also what I don't want us to do is to just be building buildings and not making changes. And then we have to do changes to try to play catch-up. And so I'd much rather us to go on pace with the growth that's happening in our community. So thank you for the work, thank you for all the stakeholders. And then also, if you have not participated in the things, and this is an opportunity to get involved. And that's why I think it's important that Katie continue doing her work. But then also, let's find other avenues and ways to get more input before it's too late. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Sparks. Board Member Marshall?
Thank you, President Murdock. Dr. Miller, I just want to say thank you for the hard work that was put in, starting back way in the spring. And knowing that throughout the summer, participation would decline just because of the nature of, of, you know, summertime, right? I think that moving forward, you know, Board Member Sparks hit on it very efficiently. We have to get creative on how we engage our community members. And really, more specifically, those specific community members that are being impacted by whatever decision it is that's, that's before us. We just have to get creative on doing that. And, you know, every email that's come through, every, any type of dialogue that I've received. You know, I just took it for face value. And, you know, looking at the data that has been provided to us over time, for me, the numbers just, just didn't add up. As far as, you know, minimizing the impact. Because, because no matter what, what happens, children are gonna be impacted. Families are going to be impacted, and this isn't gonna be the first, it's not the first time. And that's just the reward, you know, that we have for having such a flourishing community that people aspire and they desire to move into. So, creating a cadence for boundary checks is absolutely imperative to prepare families leading up to this. I think when you hit on earlier at the work session about the nineteenth elementary school coming. That, that puts it on the radar for those already in our community and the ones coming into our community, because they can access that information. And I think that's very imperative. But for me, the numbers just didn't add up, you know, when we're talking about minimizing the impact. And the more I dug into it, you know, the, the recommendation, you know, I started to notice transportation issues. Because we know in that southwest corner is growing, road closures are happening. Some roads just aren't as safe as other roads, and you're envisioning, you know, little ones on, well, not so little, because some of them are, what, six feet tall, like you said. You know, on buses, it's just, it just didn't, it just didn't add up for me. And I think that, you know, no matter what, it's, it's not, you know, that says, you know, we don't, or I don't support, you know, the recommendation in that. Our duty and our charge up here is to support the community. And so by default, that's the duty and charge of everyone from Dr. Buck on down with putting students first. So, I, I do appreciate the hard work, because I know you put in a lot of work outside of, you know, your, your day-to-day stuff. This is, this is not some easy thing that, that, you know, you started with a plethora of colors, right? And now we're down to two. So I, the appreciation is there for the work that was, that was putting into this.
Board Member Allen?
Thank you, President Murdock, thank you, Dr. Miller, and, yeah, the amount of hours and time. You've probably gone down this path a couple of times, but I'm gonna ask it again. Slow learner, sitting here, I guess. Would you spend a moment talking about the rationale under this pink option of each aspect? And I'll kind of start from the bottom up. Oh, it doesn't matter, top down, it doesn't matter. Maintain lower enrollment at SMLS to allow for future growth. Now, is that future growth primarily at Summit Lakes Middle School, or is that future growth in all four of the middle schools?
Primarily the southwest corner. We, you know, the demographer projects
Yeah.
growth there. And so what we try to do is, boundary studies are emotional. They're emotional for families, they impact kids. One of the things we try to do is create a map that would project out eight, nine, ten years, so we're not back at this again. So that's one of the reasons behind the pink option. That's, that's pretty significant.
All right. And yet, the trails is primarily east-southeast, right?
Yes.
As far as new middle school.
Correct.
And we don't, I mean, demographer is projection, that's not certain, but certainly.
You're correct, you're correct. But we also know that there's, there's known growth patterns, and then there's unknown growth patterns, which we may learn about this year with PRI, right? And so that might be more, that might impact that area all the more. So, again, trying to forecast so that we don't continue to put our families through this needlessly. And that was, that's a ma- major recommendation as part of pink.
Yeah, yeah, PRI may be ten years out. We don't, there's no, I mean, there's no.
You're correct.
So, by ten years out, we may be moving some of this in the meantime. Another elementary school, who knows, that may end up going to the southwest. But then ensuring balance in limited middle school, high school splits, again, now or later, or both.
So I want to spend a little bit of time on that, because Board Member Fritchie, and, and I under, I understand the point. But I, when we surveyed our community, and I don't want this to be lost on the board. Question five focused on transition, right? Should we focus more on elementary to middle or middle to high? We had over five hundred respondents, and again, it was a leaning, it wasn't a hard and fast. But we had over a hundred and sixty responses that said, yes, you know, middle school to high school, where you have kids that can transition together. That made sense. Whereas elementary to middle, it was about a hundred and thirty. So I, I get, there's, there's rationale for both sides, completely understand that. But I think there's concerns with splitting middle schools to three high schools. When you consider the planning and preparation and the coordination it takes to move kids to high school. It's the scheduling, it's coordinating activities, it's camps. That's time-intensive on, on a middle school, and I, I think that needs to be part of the discussion. We've had the benefit of having direct feeders for several years. This is a pretty significant change, and, and being mindful of that transition from middle to high school should also be considered.
I agree, yet we've had three middle schools and two high schools in the past. I mean, this is not uncharted.
But one middle school splitting to three high schools is, is something very different.
Than three middle schools to two high schools, that's different?
No, she's saying one particular middle school will have kids in the eighth grade who will go to three different high schools in the purple plan. And the pink plan does not have three different high schools in one particular middle school.
It's, so it's the balance of elementary versus later, one sixty versus one thirty, again, that's difficult, understood.
It's a leaning, and I, you know.
Right, leaning one way or the other.
I didn't say it was hard and fast, but that's, that's another pulse on the community that I just wanted to bring to your attention.
Yeah. Then the last is to provide more balance of free and reduced lunch populations. And when it's, when I'm flipping between pink and purple in that, in the numbers provided. So let's say purple, is it total impacted kids, four hundred and sixty-five? And then FNR to the bottom right number, or any of these, I mean, numbers of kids changing dramatically, I mean, do we know, you know, numbers of children, not percentages, as to what the difference is? I mean, SLMS, right, Summit Lakes goes from seven point seven to nine point two. I think that's a matter of forty-six versus thirty-five students? Am I missing my numbers or not?
Yes.
So, eleven people, to me, is not a big factor. Maybe, maybe I'm not of that eleven or what have you, and maybe it is a big factor, I'm not sure. But seven point, even the percent is seven point two to nine point, seven point seven to nine point two does not seem like a, a large, large number per se. District nineteen point. I guess my point is, in that regard, it seems like there's a really small difference there.
When you look at the range, so you've got a nineteen, or a nine point two to a twenty-six point, I think, what, eight? And then you have a seven point seven to a twenty-eight point five, so that's another factor, kind of consider it from a range perspective.
Okay.
There's a couple of extra percentage points when you look at it like that.
Maester.
And the other thing I would just caution you about, so when we're, we're talking about free and reduced lunch. And this is one of the reasons why, when we talk at the team, it was, it was important. We don't have great free and reduced lunch data, and we know the economy has changed drastically. We had to go back to nineteen, twenty to actually pull the data and translate that forward. Because last year's students were on waivers, this year's students are on waivers. Right now, I believe it's sitting at twelve percent. And we know that, that's not an accurate picture of what's happened to our families. So really, understanding free and reduced lunch and the grids in the particular maps. Because when we go back, and if we go back to parents filling out information, we could see an inflation of those numbers. So that's why we really had some deep conversations about that.
Mike, I'll add, the first engagement series when we had, I don't know how many plans we had up, quite a few. That was some of the parent feedback too, is what, these range of free reduced lunches from the lowest one to the highest one in middle schools is too much, please address that. So that was feedback after the first engagement that the committee then looked at.
All right. My, my biggest stumbling block in all of that, and I had, thank you for taking the time over those four points, is still, we're upsetting X number of elementary schools versus one. And so I'm thinking, granted, we're effective in the number of students, four hundred and sixty-five and five hundred and one. The numbers are close to equal, or they're close. But it's one school versus however many others, so that's my biggest reservation. I keep going back to that, saying, hmm, scratching my head and wondering, and not knowing that. my head and wondering, and un- and not knowing that any of this is certain past 2023, 2024 for that matter. So I just, it's, if we want to minimize, so to speak, the least amount of logistics, it seems like one school makes more sense than, what, four? Five?
I think it's seven total.
Seven, okay, seven, sorry. The numbers are small numbers, but, okay. Thank you.
Um, I'm gonna offer a few comments here unless other people have, uh, other ideas and stuff to offer. Um, the first thing that I would offer here is, um, I do think that there needs to be a point made about balance and continue to highlight that balance is important, and that while, uh, elementary schools splitting in this particular, uh, plan, and I'm referencing the pink plan right now, okay, so, um, elementary schools splitting, uh, goes up, um, from five to seven, the majority, and Dr. Miller and I have talked about this, um, the majority of them are still balanced splits, meaning, you know, you're gonna have a, a fifth grade class, I guess, and now, since we're moving into the middle school model, I almost had catch myself there, but those fifth grade classes are gonna split relatively evenly with a notable exception of one school, but they already are a split school. Um, so their community has, has, I mean, it would still be a normal school year essentially for them. And I think that that balance is important because in the purple plan, while yes, we only impact Richardson, I think when you look at the middle schools, it is not balanced at all in terms of splitting off, um, and having East Trails students, um, and Pleasantly students, um, split into three. While it's a short-term issue, I think it also deserves a little bit of weight that you're opening a new building and then asking those kids who are now going to a completely new building as well to then split into thirds, um, here just after a couple of years. So I think that that's something else that obviously alleviates itself over time as that school gets established. Um, but just forming a new school community, which East Trails will be doing, and then asking them to split into thirds, um, I think, uh, could be, have issues. I mentioned to board member Fritchie, and, and, you know, and I said I was gonna bring it up here, too, because, you know, um, I don't want to base a decision on the number of messages that we have received, because I think that that's not necessarily indicative of what the community has been talking about, especially when you talk about the engagement series and stuff that people have come to and also provided feedback. But, you know, one of the things that, uh, board member Fritchie and I talked about is the impact of kids going from elementary to middle school and the changes that that brings, the emotional changes, the changes in schedules and stuff like that. And the thing that I offered, because I do think it is a huge transition, is the huge transition is going to be there regardless of what plan we're actually passing. You know, it doesn't matter. Sorry, everybody, it does matter, I'm not saying that it's not important, um, but a lot of those things, the social-emotional issues, um, and things like that are going to be prevalent and present, um, for these kids, and for the most part, when you are moving with your neighborhood, um, and the kids that are, you have grown up with, um, that is the support network that carries you through that transition. And in this particular case, those neighborhoods are intact. Um, and so I do think that that's something that we need to consider. Um, and then the last thing that I would offer is, you know, one of the biggest things that I went through, and I do think it's a very difficult decision, um, is going back to the, your guiding criteria that the committee used. What was the guiding criteria, um, for trying to come up with these particular plans? Um, and in the end, you know, I mean, we have the guiding criteria of trying to be balanced, of trying to maintain enrollment, um, and, you know, ultimately looking at our free and reduced lunch populations, all of those were a part of our guiding criteria when we were doing this, the transportation issues and, and such. Um, and so I do think that we need to respect that the 50 people on the committee spent, I'll be perfectly honest, spent far more time on it than, than I have been able to, right? I mean, we can receive the feedback, we can have all the discussions we want, but the committee is the one that was looking at the enrollment, the maps, um, and trying to make the best recommendation possible. Um, and so I do think that the pink option, uh, ultimately is going to be, um, the best option for us, and I'm gonna support that tonight. Is there any other questions, comments? Sorry, uh, board member Campbell.
I think, I think you highlighted it, and I just wanted to confirm, I thought it was about 50 folks that we had on the committee, is that right?
That sounds about right, 45.
45.
I just counted 45.
Great, yeah. And I do want to share, and I know many board members have said this already, I agree, I cannot thank them enough, um, to President Murdock's point, that they have spent way more, you have spent way more hours evaluating these, weighing the pros and cons, weighing the impact, and I just appreciate all that effort and all that work, and thank you so much.
I appreciate those comments. The, the, the committee was very earnest in their work and dedicated, um, so, and some of the committee members are here tonight, so appreciate them being here.
Any other comments or questions before we take a vote? Okay, Ms. Sismar, can we have a roll call vote on this one, please?
Board member Campbell?
The motion, the motion before us is to adopt the pink plan. Okay, so yes would be for the pink plan.
Board member Sparks? Board member Hedrick?
No.
Board member Fritchie?
No.
Board member Allen?
No.
Vice president Marshall?
No.
President Murdock?
Yes. Motion fails four to three. So at this point, we would need a new motion. Or, I guess at this point, the board could also vote to table this until next month. I mean, you did get that answer in the board packet as well, so that would also be an option if people want to charge the committee or Dr. Miller, uh, to evaluate some other things without passing purple tonight. So I don't, I'm not trying to sway you one way or another, I'm saying those are our two options essentially, either we put a motion on the table for purple or we table it for tonight.
I just want to add, if we do table it, that probably makes it pretty much difficult, if not impossible, to have our staffing in place by the time the semester ends, which is our goal, so people can, uh, make their decisions and we can go in the hiring process.
So I'd take, anybody can, can start with a motion if they want?
I move that the board approve the purple option of, for the proposed middle school boundaries for the 22-23 school year. I'll take, take the word proposed out of there, the purple option for middle school boundaries.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to adopt the purple plan, um, and so we will take any discussion or comments. Board member Sparks?
I was actually gonna make another motion, uh, but that motion beat me, so.
Any questions or comments? I'm only gonna offer one comment that, you know, in this, I hope isn't taken the wrong way. You know, in previous meetings, we've talked about the need to honor the commitment that people made in terms of making recommendations, committees and stuff like that, and I've been guilty of it, too, so I want to recognize that. Um, and so we are going against the community members that just served on our committee, along with a lot of our staff members who put forth this recommendation.
Matt? Ask a question.
Sure.
Or consideration to Roderick Sparks, is there an amendment you would want to add to the motion that is on the floor, or is this a very different situation?
It's totally different.
Okay.
But I will just second, rhyme it up.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, so Ms. Sismar, we'll take a roll call vote on this motion, please.
Board member Hedrick?
Aye.
Board member Allen?
Aye.
Board member Campbell?
No.
Vice president Marshall?
Aye.
Board member Fritchie?
Aye.
Board member Sparks?
Aye.
President Murdock?
No. Motion passes five to two. Thank you very much, Dr. Miller. We are going to move on to item 8.04, that is the extension of the mask requirement within our schools. And Dr. Buck, do you want to lead this one off here?
Sure, at, uh, back in the August, uh, board meeting, August 5th, special board meeting, we said we would revisit this today. I will say that, um, we do have two mask mandates still in place until November 4th for Summit Point Elementary and November 7th for Jackson, Eastern Jackson County. So we do have it to those dates. Um, so before us now is, do we extend beyond those dates? If, if they don't extend, obviously if they extend, we have to comply. Um, our numbers in Jackson County have declined quite a bit since, uh, mid-September, early September. Um, they are, uh, still in the high range, but they're getting close to coming out of the high, the high range. If you remember, we had the green, you know, yellow and red, we're at the, we're getting almost out of the red. Um, so we're getting closer. Um, some stats for you, uh, to consider is that, uh, our quarantines per positive case have gone down considerably. Second semester last year, so January through May, uh, we were averaging 9.4 quarantines per positive case. We have more kids in our buildings this year, we're down to 2% of our kids being online, so 20% like last year, and we're in five days a week. Uh, yet our quarantine level has dropped to 3.3 as of Tuesday per positive case, so, um, almost dropped in the third. There's two reasons for that, um, even though the kid counts have gone up this semester compared to last semester, if you look at the county data, um, kid cases are making up a higher percent now in the county. That's because you do not have to quarantine if one of two things are in place. One, you're quarantined yourself, you, and you're not showing symptoms, you don't have to quarantine if you're a close contact to a positive case, and our middle school and high school kids have that option, and, and we have quite a few that have vaccinated. Um, our little ones don't have that option. The second way you can avoid a quarantine if you're a close contact to a positive case is if you're both masked, both kids are masked. Um, so right now, that is helping keep our number down. Um, we're hopeful that, uh, our younger students will have the option, the families will have the option to get vaccinated soon, uh, but they don't, currently do not have that option. So just want to throw some data points out there for you and, and turn it over to you guys to decide, uh, what you want to do.
Okay, um, so board members, what we will do here first, just like we did with the last one, we'll take a motion. You can see what the administrative recommendation is, um, to continue the, the mask mandate until our November board meeting, at which time we could reevaluate it and might have, obviously, not only data from the county, but also then, uh, we might have some vaccine announcements and stuff like that, too. We don't know that, obviously, as of yet, but, um, certainly with the meeting scheduled for next week, um, from the FDA and, and the like, we would probably have some more data to go on, uh, during the November board meeting, but we do need a motion before we, uh, start any discussion, please.
So I actually do not want to, uh, make the recommended emotion, motion, um, but I would like to make a motion for us to not revisit this until second semester. And I can give some basis on why I'm making that motion now, or
Can I ask to please clarify what you're, I, I didn't
Yeah, you would need to just make a motion.
What you said, so please clarify.
So my motion is for us not to revisit, um, removing masks or the mask mandate until after, until the conclusion of first semester.
So basically, you're asking to continue the mask mandate until the end of the first semester, is that?
That is correct.
Thank you.
To clarify, that's January, what, 15th plus or minus, 20th?
It's our last day of December, correct? Last day of school? No, it is not. Do you have that date right off the top of your head? I certainly do not have that date off the top of my head.
Hold on, we'll look at the calendar. For, January 14th?
Thank you, Dr. Kenny, you get the star.
So I, I do think, we, so, can you reword the motion then? Because if, if that's the, so it'd be January 14th?
I make a motion that we revisit the mask mandate on January, once we return from our holiday after January the 14th.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to continue to revisit the mask mandate on January the, in our January board meeting after the January 14th, end of the first semester. Comments? Um, I'm, I'm actually gonna start on this one, um, just, I, I, just because I have my thoughts kind of together, so
President Murdock?
Yeah, sure.
I understand you have your thoughts, because I made the motion, can I just speak to the motion?
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, go for it.
So basically, my thoughts is, um, consistency, um, for our students. Um, I know that every time it's on, on board docs, um, we're getting emails, um, we're hearing from the community, it is creating anxiety, um, and I just believe that, um, the reason why our numbers are going down is because of the, uh, more students are able to stay in school and not be at home, um, due to quarantining because of the mask wearing, and I just believe that it's much easier, um, just to be able to just kind of make that call now. Uh, we obviously know holidays, we knew what happened last year, um, and I just am afraid that, uh, we may have some of that same, um, things go on, um, during the holiday time, so that's why I wanted to make that motion. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Um, so I, I would like to offer a couple of things. I'm, I'm one, I mean, it's probably no shock, you know, that, um, the reason that one of the administrative recommendations was there was talking it through with, with leadership, um, on where to go with that particular, um, date. Um, two reasons, number one is, is that, you know, if the vaccines become available for kids, um, at that point, we finally will have had some options for everybody within our school district, um, which I think, for the longest time, we have been telling the community that that's one of the big guiding factors is, is that we haven't had vaccines available for our elementary students. If there are vaccines available for elementary students, and all indications would, would certainly point to the fact that they will be available by Halloween, I mean, that's, that's where all the data is pointing here, um, you would be talking about everybody having an opportunity essentially by the first of December, mid-December at the absolute latest, I would think, um, for those who would choose, um, to do that. Um, I mean, it's really, the supply is there, so it's probably actually Thanksgiving, really, but, um, so for me, um, I'm fine with continuing to revisit it at this point. You know, I'm, I'm gonna be very supportive of anything to, um, once everybody's had a chance to have vaccines, to remove masks, I want to be very upfront on that. Um, and so, um, I think we owe it to the community, we've been wait, telling all along that we wanted to wait until vaccines for the younger kids show up, um, to continue to, to discuss the, the topic. And I think we'll have the information we need come the November board meeting to actually set a firm date. Um, I think waiting until the end of January is actually gonna cause even more angst in the community than, than, uh, revisiting it each month. Uh, board member Allen?
We are at, um, complying by the Jackson County Health Department, right, November 7th, is that the date?
Yeah, for every building except for Summit Point is, in Eastern Jackson County, it's November 7th, um, for Summit Point, they're, uh, in the Kansas City Health Department, Kansas City, uh, purview, and there is, uh, they're, they're to November 4th right now. We do not know if the, either one of those entities are gonna ask for an extension or not.
With that, then, um, our vote was to go through the first quarter, correct? So our school is, district is really October 22nd? Is that right?
Well, the first quarter is, yeah.
Tomorrow is the end of the first quarter, so right now, our mask mandate expires tomorrow, but we still have to comply by the Health Department, so even if it, we let it expire and don't extend it, we have to comply with the Health, or with the county and the city, which right now is November 7th and 4th respectively.
All right, well, I, since you've offered your opinion about, um, revisiting this November 18th, much like I talked about at the meeting when we had this August 5th special session, I'm gonna let the Health Department guide my opinion of where this should be. So if it ends November 7th, I would just soon end it November 7th and let our health professionals for Jackson County set the mandate for our district. And if they lift it November 7th, I just assume we lift it in the school district because even beyond where we might visit November 18th, it will become, um, even a lo- I believe, a larger, more contentious issue, especially at the secondary level, high schools predominantly, maybe not the middle schools. So whatever, so whatever the, whatever the motion may be, I'll probably be voting no on any of them unless it is ended if the county ends it, quite frankly.
Okay. Uh, board member Hedrick?
I just have a question. So, um, in terms of, uh, switching learning modes, what does that look like for families? At this point, if we would decide, you know, to go with the November 7th date, and we have families who are concerned about their kids coming to school without masks on, what do, do they have options at that point, or, or when do they have options, or kind of along the way? Does that
So moving from
So, moving from in-person to online is easier than go from online to in-person, but it could create some staffing issues for us, depending on the volume. But we will try to accommodate the best we can with people moving in-person, online, which we already are doing, and we did last year as well, so...
So, we would allow them to change?
Yes.
If they wanted to change from in-person to online because of our mask decision?
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Board Member Campbell?
I appreciate everybody's input, and I appreciate the focus for the safety of our students. I think that's in the forefront of all of our minds, and it feels like, and I don't want to speak for my fellow board members, but it feels like everybody agrees, to your point, Dr. Buck, that continuing masking at this point is very important. And to your point, in alignment with the county in Kansas City, as we know, we have the one elementary school in that area. So, it feels like we have agreement that continuing masking is important. It's just that determination of when we might end it. And there are, again, just like we've talked about for the last 18 months, there are a lot of unknowns. We think the vaccine will be coming, you know, in the October Halloween timeframe. I'm hopeful of that for our students. And we know that having masks on has helped reduce the number of quarantine kids that we have. So, we've been able to, with masking, keep our students in school, keep our students learning, and that's the primary importance. It's really just a discussion of at what date do we reconsider, do we take this back up to reconsider? So, I think that's a good discussion to keep reviewing.
Board Member Sparks?
So, I, after hearing from my fellow board members, Ryan, I think your point is valid, that vaccination is supposed to be coming. We don't know the surrounding information around how many vaccinations they'll be able to complete, how many will actually be able through scheduling. And so, I just think if you're talking a timeline from Thanksgiving of having majority of our students, what would it cost to wait two more weeks? Just given stability and just given that information. And then to Mike's point, I mean, I was elected to represent LSR 7, not the county. And even though we do yield to the professionalism and the expertise and the knowledge of those individuals, they also gave some strong recommendations, and it was to keep masks on. And we didn't follow that as a district. And so, if we're going to say that, then I think we have to be consistent also in saying that we're going to follow the expertise and the knowledge of them. And so, my decision is based on the representation of our students, not from a county standpoint, thank you.
Board Member Fritchie?
Yes, thanks. I think for the most part, we have followed Jackson County, even though not every time, as you point out. But I would feel comfortable revisiting it at the November meeting, as you suggested.
Any other questions or comments regarding this, on this particular motion? Board Member Allen?
One question, so, thank you, President Murdock. So, one question, if the county does choose to extend whenever their next meeting is, I guess next week, and they go from, let's just say artificially, you know, November 7th to December 10th or 15th, or whatever the date is, do we bring it up again on November 18th, or we just abide by that county mandate?
They can only do up to 30 days extension, so it'll be shy of December 7th.
Got you. So, again, we won't even have it on the table on the 18th, or do we? I got you.
Mr. Hatley, did you want to add something? Sorry.
I was waving feverishly to get somebody's attention. There's this Missouri statute whose impact is still not settled, and I think some of the cities and counties are assuming they cannot have their orders in place more than 30 days. It's still being litigated whether it applies to mask orders. A lot of places are being very conservative and not extending it longer now than 30 days just to avoid being sued under that law. So, I want to just point that out as a factor for you to consider. I didn't want you to, you know, go to January and then get sued and say, "Why weren't you jumping up and screaming and telling us?" Because that's why I'm here.
Got it, thanks, appreciate that. Okay, so, we have a motion on the floor, is there any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll just refresh, Board Members, this is a motion to extend the mask order until January the 14th and then revisit it at the January board meeting. Did I get that right, Ms. Sizmer?
I was going to ask you to clarify that, so, thank you.
Okay. So, yes would be to extend, no would be to say no, so... All right, well, this is a vote on to extend until January the 14th. Yeah. Ms. Sizmer, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Can you also let me know who made the second?
Megan made the second.
Okay, I thought so, I just wanted to be sure. Board Member Campbell?
No.
Board Member Fritchie?
No.
Board Member Hedrick?
No.
Vice President Marshall?
No.
Board Member Sparks?
Aye.
Board Member Allen?
No.
President Murdock?
No. Motion fails six to one. So, we need a new motion here from a board member.
I move that the board approve... Excuse me, let me start over. I move that the board continue the mask mandate until the November board meeting scheduled for November 18th.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue until November the 18th, which would be our board meeting. And just for board members' sake, just so you know, and Dr. Buck and I talked about this, if you vote yes for this motion, regardless of if the county expires, it'll continue in our district until November 18th. So, I do want to make sure that we all are on the same page there, okay? Any questions or comments regarding this particular motion? Okay, there is a motion and a second, Ms. Sizmer, can we have a roll call vote on this, please?
Board Member Fritchie?
Yes.
Board Member Hedrick?
Aye.
Vice President Marshall?
Aye.
Board Member Sparks?
Aye.
Board Member Allen?
No.
Board Member Campbell?
Aye.
President Murdock?
Aye. Motion carries six to one. Appreciate you all on those last two topics, so... We don't have any items of information presentations tonight, so we're going to move on to our written reports, so 10.01, 02, and 03. So, if anybody has any comments or remarks that they would like to make regarding our bond budget, our board priorities, or our facility services, now's the time. Board Member Fritchie?
I didn't even have to press my button on that one. 10.2, the board priorities update. I just wanted to say that I really do appreciate this monthly update information, especially hearing from the few schools that we have in that information on how they're implementing our board priorities. I think that's really important for us, to get that perspective. I mean, we, you know, we have a committee that made up the board priorities. I happen to be on that, well, we all did the board priorities, but I was on the comprehensive facility, or comprehensive improvement plan, CSIP. Anyway, but, I mean, it's good to see how that those priorities that we make filter and what the schools do with them. And so, I just really would like to say, nice job. To Sunset Valley and Hawthorne Hill, our two featured schools this month. And to Mrs. Shelley Sanders, I just wanted to say kudo to you on the district inclusion calendar. I really think that's great, to see all of the diverse events at a glance and be able to click on them and find out more information about, you know, months that I had no idea, you know, it was a certain month, and find out more about that month. And that just helps us promote understanding. And so, that's just one more little piece that helps. On 10.03, the facility services annual program evaluation. I know that facilities aren't glamorous, but facilities, facility services is amazing. I just have to say, wow, Kyle Gorrell, that report was literally packed, packed with information. I knew that you guys were good, but that report shows that you actually have some really excellent goals, and you work to carry those out to the best of your ability, and I just really appreciate that, Kyle. Thanks for your leadership, and thank you for being so responsive when people share concerns with you. Your department has a huge job, as you pointed out in the report. How many, I don't even have it down here, how many buildings, how many square feet you clean, how many, all that. It's just amazing, but you all do it very well. So, please pass that on to everyone involved with facilities, thank you, thank you.
Board Member Allen?
Thank you, President Murdock. Kim, of course, steals the thunder, that very, I'm sorry, should I say Board Member Fritchie? But that was very good, and I agree on all of those counts, and specifically in the facilities piece, the strategic alignment, the long-range plan, the continued evaluation of where the puck is going to go, as Wayne Gretzky said, is outstanding, because those costs are doing nothing but going up, and the needs there are doing nothing but going up. So, thank you for keeping your eye on that. And then in the board priorities, and I think this is just the Hawthorne Hill piece, but I think all schools do this. Both had, I love the poster, right? The last poster piece, or stock piece there that has the Equity Lens piece to it, and the CSIP climb piece, because I think that climb piece is huge to incorporate that and staying on the CSIP plan, both short-term and long-term, and balancing all of those throughout. So, good, just really good work, and not just Hawthorne Hill, but across the district. But certainly, I love that poster.
Anybody else with any comments? Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, you're fine, I stopped, thank you.
Any other comments or questions here for the reports? Board Member Campbell?
I think just reiterating, Board Member Fritchie and Board Member Allen, but really highlighting, you know, when we talked about the CSIP and we approved that, we really wanted everyone that was engaged and involved, and I think everyone in our community wants that to be a living and breathing, you know, plan. That's the guiding strategic view for our district. And so, it's exciting to see that tie to what's going on at the building level with that strategic plan. So, agree, and thank you, everybody, for that.
Board Member Sparks? Thank you, Board Member Campbell. Board Member Sparks?
I too, just want to tell Kyle and that entire department that I truly appreciate what you do. I know as a, when I was a kid growing up, it was the janitor, Ms. Jackie, for me, that took to me, would encourage me, would... And so, a lot of times when we think of janitors, we think all they do is sweep, or all they do is pull trash or pull out tables. No, they're a big part of our buildings. And so, I appreciate what they do for our students and what they do for us holistically as a district, thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other comments? Okay, we will go back upstairs to resume the closed session, but this regular meeting is adjourned, thank you all very much.